Welcome to our eleventh session of Kubernetes. CKA study, study group. Today, we're gonna be jumping into the security section of Kubernetes. And at the high level, we're gonna be looking at securing our. Our host that only SSH-based authentication is possible. And securing the access to the Q API server, as you know. Without being able to access the Q API server. You can't do much in Kubernetes, as that is the brains of the operations. So we're gonna be setting up the authentication, which is. Who can connect to it and authorization, which is gonna be what the user that is connected to. What they can do. We're also gonna be securing the communication between all the different components. Which is gonna be all TLS based. And we'll see how Kubernetes uses certificates to establish those TLS connections between the components. And then we're gonna be jumping into network policies and. How they are set up for app-to-app to communication. So let's go ahead and jump into, we're gonna be starting with the TLS certificates for. Our Q API server and all the components that it talks to. The first question is gonna be. Identify the certificates file used for the Q API server. So. For the Q API server, we're gonna have all of the certs and keys listed inside of its spec sheet. And we could get it by looking at the. Kubernetes API, Q API manifest file. So let's go ahead and we can just cat it. This case, it's always in the Etsy Kubernetes. Manifest, and we're looking for the Q API. And we can scroll up here and we can see in all the different options, all the different certs that are used. In this case, they are asking for a certificate file used by the Q API server. So let's see. This is gonna be our cert file for the API server. And all of our certs and keys are also gonna be in the Etsy Kubernetes PKI. Directory with the exception for the SCD, which will have its own directory, sorry. She's gonna be a slash SCD inside of the PKI. Alright, so. We go over here. We're looking for API server that's cert. There's gonna be this guy right here. Identify certificate file used to authenticate Q API server as a client to SCD server. So this is. Gonna be the cert that the Q API server that it uses to talk to the SCD server. And. We can see right here. Yes, ever SCD. Client. SRT. Yes, yes. Fuck, put the key.
It's the fourth one?
The fourth one?
Yes, the fourth one, it has, wait, I don't know.
Oh.
Says Qlet.
Oh, yeah, it's the first one, yeah, the first one.
Yeah, I sometimes get confused too when all these have very similar wording. Identify key used to authenticate the. To the Qlet, so that's the one that we clicked on earlier, I believe. It is here. Hold up, hold up. They had it. Qlet. API, Qlet client, that's cert.
Wait, 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 it's the key.
Oh, they're asking for the key.
Yeah.
Good catch, good catch. Identify SCD server certificate used to host SCD server. So this is to host the SCD server? So. That's not gonna be it, so for this one, we have to go over to the SCD server and look at its cert. We can do the same thing. CD, YAML. And we can see its cert file. Certificate. SCD that's slash server cert. Hold up. Yeah, here it is. And. Do any of you wanna find the CA root certificate for the SCD server?
Yeah, I mean, there's two ways to go about it. Are you in the file now or are you still in the, I think you did a cute system.
This is, this is the SCD server.
It is the SCD server, okay, cool. Um, so go down to the, yeah, there, there you go, right there. It's the trusted CA file. There you go.
Alright, what is the common name, CA configured on the Q API server certificate? It's when they tell you the answer, how to get the answer here. Pretty much, we just need to use this command. To look up the file, the CA. Server certificate file, so it's just gonna be this guy here. Then we can go ahead and copy this.
Is that the right one or do we need to be back in the other one since we're in the SCD?
Yeah, we're in SCD, so we probably need to be in a Q API server, right?
No, I don't think you have to, oh, wait, I mean, I see what you mean, yeah, that's the path. Yeah.
Here's the, here's the configuration for the Q API server. And we just need to find the server cert.
Okay, so, oh, this server cert, where is it? Uh. Client, client, client. Is it the? There you go, API server.
Bottom. So, just drop that in there. And. We're looking for the common name configured for the API server.
Okay, there, it's your, yeah, Kubernetes, yeah.
Well, this is actually gonna be the issuer of the certificate.
It's the subject.
Nah, hey, I thought it was at the top though with, hey, CN.
I remember now, yeah, it's a, it's a subject one, the issuer is the one that issuing the, um. The certification, the certificate, but yeah, the subject is the actual one.
Yeah, server. And what is the name of the CA that issued the Q API cert certificate?
Kubernetes.
Yep, that's correct. And which of the below alternative names configured on the Q API server certificate?
Okay, you go down and you go, you go, subject. Alternative names, and that's where you see it. You said which one is not, right?
Yeah.
So. It would be. Q master, looks like.
Correct. And we're gonna do the same thing now for the SCD server. Go ahead and grab this cert file, this guy here. And here's our new certificate. And we're looking for the configured name, common name for the SCD server.
So that will be, looks like control plane.
Correct. And how long from the issue date? The Q API server certificate valid for?
Uh, oh. It should be on here, right? Okay, so you say Q API, are you in like API one? No, you're not, here you go down, yeah, go ahead and go up, there you go. Alright, so it is.
It's like a year.
It's one year, yeah.
Correct. SCD one, or how long is the issue date, root CA certificate valid for?
Okay, that one's different, you can just run the same command, right, but you have to just use, um.
Let's see a.
Yeah, the CA file, yeah.
To the API server?
And you go, oh, it's, yeah, there you go, it's right there.
Alright.
Alright, looks like that is ten years.
Ten years. All of these are a year. The root CA being ten years. Do you guys know if that's the default?
Now, I do not know if that is actual default.
It's okay, not to know, that's just me being curious. Cube CTL suddenly stops responding to your commands, check out some, someone's recently modified its YAML file for SCD. Um, we need to investigate and find out what's going on, so. We do a Kube Get Pods dash A, we get no response by the looks of it.
No.
And what we can do, we can do a cry CTL.
That's why I need.
Just to see what's running. And. It's like everything is running minus our SCD, our SCD is down. So where would we, how would we go about troubleshooting this next?
Hmm, I mean, since it told us something been modified, I had to go look at the file.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go into the YAML, the ETC YAML file. And see what, what the config, what configurations that could be wrong. Somebody made a change to that that's causing it not to work. And a lot of things in the, a lot of things that's in the actual. Um, described will be in the YAML file as well, so we could still look into like the past there.
So what, okay, I was gonna ask him, well, I guess the file is already showing, never mind.
Oh, go ahead, PJ.
Nah, nah, you're good, I was gonna say it says, it tells you a file they modified, but if that wasn't there. We, we still need to know exactly where to look, because they're not gonna be that evident, you know what I'm saying, so.
I got you.
Static pause, definitely look. Into the Kubernetes manifest to get those static paws and, you know, check out those configs.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I was getting that, yeah, I will, me personally, I would have knew to look into the YAML file. Because I can't, I can't look into describe, so if I can't look into describe, I would just look directly into the YAML file myself. But that's just one of my stuff of troubleshooting.
Alright, yeah, let's see what it could be now.
Now that we're in here, how would we go about knowing what the issue is?
That one is, excuse me, um. I would just say, check. The. So what caused it, if, if the YAML is there and the configuration. I would, I, because of where we get, I would, I would assume it would be a certificate or a key. However, do you guys have any other idea on how we can check to see or to pretty much dilute or to? Um. More so, um. Can't figure out, yeah, just figure out, pretty much figure out where we should look outside of, of course, looking into the, the manifest file. Like when you're in the manifest file, what to look for, or you just look into all of the, all of the paths and make sure everything is correct?
The first thing is just to, just to, just to look, you know what I'm saying, like just look. A few seconds, actually look.
Alright. I mean, I, I guess if I didn't know what I was looking for, man, I probably would actually pull up the docs on, you know, the SCD. That's just me, because, uh, you know, you got all these cert files and you do need to understand, like. The naming convention for them, because they normally all in the same location.
Okay, so. Based upon that, I just wanna make sure, um, because, yeah, you guys are, I just wanna see if there's anything quicker, but.
Yeah, before we go down that path, we're, if you don't know what you're looking for and you go through the docs. You, you're not gonna have time for that under the actual test, so before we even go down that path. The way I would usually go about it is I would check the logs first and, of course, we need to find the logs. For that SCD, or first let's check the API server. Um, see if they give us some logs.
The API still running.
Because the API server is still there.
Okay, I think I, I remember, I think I tried that, I couldn't get anything, so that's why I, uh. But we'll see, I mean, it may have been another question.
I think there's another way to get the logs, um.
The cry CTL logs?
You could do that, or you can get the actual logs from inside this, the log system, like.
Yeah, I think because of the, the same fact that the, that the, we can't use Q cuddle or, I don't think we can be, we'd be able to use the log command.
Oh, right, right, yeah.
So, yeah, that was pretty much what I, that question, like, I couldn't figure out where to actually look to see where the logs. I keep on forgetting about that cry cuddle, I gotta remember that, I did read that it's a way to, that is used primarily to troubleshoot. Uh. Can't see the status fail ever. Find container, cannot find container.
Oh.
So they can't find the container. Looks like it just can't. The only thing I could think of is that, if, if it just can't find the container or the, um. Oh, I think I don't.
SCD which exited. Just, I could have sworn this is how I did it, oh, there we go, okay.
Okay.
So, we can get the logs of the, yeah, go ahead.
Cool question, you use, um, cry cuddle, PS, and then dash A for every, for all of them, right? I, 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 okay, um, I missed when you actually typed it, okay.
So that will show you the logs of all, or it'll show you the name of all the exited pods as well. Um, but I was curious, I wanted to see the logs of the API server, but for whatever reason, I can't grab them. Dot found, let's. When it's running. Now it works, okay.
Okay.
Wait, was that the API server one or?
That's, that's like the schedule, I like the schedule.
Controller, I think.
Where is it? An A five eight? Ah, nope, got the wrong one. Need the PR.
Oh, the Q API server exited as well. Because the, the pod is dead, the pod is not existing. Remember, when you're, when you're looking for naturally, pods are, or containers are ephemeral. So they don't have any persistent data.
Hmm.
So what you're saying is, if, so pretty much. Um, those logs wouldn't need to be like, getting like backed up into somewhere else if we needed to really troubleshoot in a real world environment then?
Yeah, exactly.
Here's a question for you then, how come we're able to grab the logs for the SCD which has exited? Versus the API server?
If I may, I think because the API server is still dependent on ETC, ETCD, also, also.
Well, doesn't SCD server have like persistence, like?
Yes, that's another thing, it's, it's, it's persistent.
Stores key values.
And it's sort of key values.
Thing that stores, um, values there.
Right, so because of the, because the Q API is not able to get the information from the. ETCD is pretty much, it's like one of the main dependencies of it, for when I, from what I'm, I'm getting at, while, while we're getting forward, they just made the architecture. Like the ETC, the ECD might be able to work without the API, but API cannot work without the ETCD. If that makes sense, that's what I'm getting at.
Okay.
Um.
Here, let's see what these logs say.
Listener failed. Oh, there you go, open, uh, EKCD Kubernetes PKI, uh, PKI, the. No such file in the directory, so that means that, uh, it looks like that, uh, that's the wrong file. In the, um, for the certificate. So now we just have to go into the actual, um. We actually have to go into the actual folder to see which server file is actually existing in there to get the correct path.
Yeah, um, question, let's answer the question first, and I wanna, I wanna, I wanna add something as well, so don't, don't click check when you're done, bro, you know.
Okay, um.
So first, let's fix this issue.
Yeah.
Right, so for that path, since we can't go in, we can't get into the API, I would. I would go and, yeah, just go list all the, um. Everything that's in the ETCD, um, folder. And then look for that, uh, server, yep, right there.
And we're trying to get into. Server certificate.
Yes, the certificate doesn't exist, so we just have to replace it with, yeah.
See, okay, so let's go.
Honestly, we could just go into the VIM file and remove.
Leave certificate off the end of it.
Mm-hmm, that's the only thing that's different, is that that certificate.
There it is. And then we can do a cry CTL. PS. And I have forgotten how to make this a watch command.
Try, try, um, you can't do try minus W? Or there's no watch on it? Um.
Oh, you, you can't do it, oh, here's the SCD.
Oh, put watch, is it, is it actually watch, cry cuddle, PS? Cause sometimes it's like actually better spell it.
The watch is its own, oh.
You were right.
Oh. Yeah, remember that too, um, alright, cool.
But yeah, we're, this shit, well, to test this, we can do a K Get Pods again. Let's do it that way. Uh. Refused.
It's running, it's still.
Yeah, it's, they have to wait at least about a minute or two.
Yeah, the, yeah, it.
It takes a time.
It takes a, it takes a while before it actually configured in.
But in the meantime, while we're waiting for that, um, try to do this for me, bro, um, do a. Uh, let's CD to var log. And then ls. CD to pods. LS. CD to, um, Kube System SCD Control Plane. LS. CD SCD. Let's see what we got. And then let's cat that.
Same thing.
Okay, interesting.
So you don't necessarily have to use cry cuddle. But you can, there's so many ways you can do it, try to, try to do this as well, do PS, do, not PS, but do, um. Uh, journal CTO. And then, um. Uh, grep, do, um, pipe it and then grep like SCD. And then like grep minus I, yeah. Let's see if there's anything that comes up.
Yeah, that's a definitely easy way.
This one sometimes it gives you too much, it's too much data sometimes, so it may not always be the best. But I used to do like that, I grabbed that and also grabbed like error or something like that. And then. It can sometimes help you out too.
Do you know any, how, if you use tail. Like how many would you recommend, like ten, twenty? Cause it looks like, from what I'm, from what I'm seeing, it's like. I wanna say.
So I use, I, I like to use, um, journal CTO, it's been, um, pretty helpful for me. When I, when I didn't really understand, um. Cry code, because cry code may not be installed. As the, um, as the runtime engine, right?
Oh, you never used it with the test?
I didn't, I didn't use it for the test, I, I know how to use it, it's just sometimes you may, it may be a different runtime engine, it may not be dock, it may be Docker or maybe. Um, you know, something else, so it may not like cry code, but they all are familiar, like the same commands, it may just be like Docker PS. As, cry cuddle, PS, so they're all kinda like the same commands. But if you wanna just go directly from the system, you can like look at the logs from the other, um. Like the other pods and even containers, it looks like over there too, so, um, so just var log. And then pods, you know, so it kinda gives you a. A way to, another way to check it out too, even if it's not going in the, um, the cry cuddle, um, log section.
Okay.
But yeah, that was it, that was the only thing I wanted to, um, I wanted to go and look at.
Alright. Pretty dope. Good info. Go. Alright, so. Q API is down again. Expected, see what's going on. Alright, so. Try to do the command again, K Get Pods. Connection refused. Um, so then we can do a cry. CTL, PS. What's running?
Do it again.
It's running.
If you don't mind.
Uh, do what again there?
The command, yeah. Interesting, everything's running, but. That's an issue still. This one's the API container, so I guess can we, uh, look at, we just look at the log for the API server or API container?
Looks like they're restarting.
How you could tell that, um, the attempt?
Yeah, the attempts in the time.
Run it one more time to, um, the PS dash A, if you don't mind.
Yeah, minus the, the minus A as well, can you add the minus A flag? See if there's anything in there.
There we go.
Yeah, there you go, yeah, so like, it, it, after a certain amount of times, it, it just exited out, um. So I guess we.
The Q API server. And.
Here they tell us to check the logs here, so let's go ahead and do that.
Mm-hmm.
We'll look at the API server. That server is down.
We're in cry code log container, come into view the logs. You know, surprised it tells you to do that, but it's not working, right?
Here, so let's do the logs for this guy.
I know, I I know what I did, it it I was having the same issue, like for some reason, it was.
There we go.
Okay, there goes, so the certificate failed. It was signed by unknown authority.
Error content deadline, oh, context deadline exceeded.
So, oh. There was a command that we was able to see who was the authority.
Yes, open S S L minus X five oh nine, minus.
Let's first cat the.
We also have to get the, uh, yeah, we have to get the path first, um.
For the API.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just need this.
T L S cert, right, is it T L S that we're looking for?
Yep.
Yeah.
And then this one, I'll look in the the docs as well, cause it it tells you that in the docs or with the command is.
A- actually, oh, I'm sorry P, I'm sorry PJ, uh, I just see, it it's a client C A file that you probably need to um look at.
It's a client C A.
Yeah, my bad, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Nah, you're good, you're good, brother, you're good, brother.
Uh, it's on the, on the top, yeah, I think that's the um the C A, the certificate you need to look at, to see, um.
Yep, well, how do you fi- how do you figure that, I'm just, I'm curious?
Uh, as far as like the um, what's going on, well. From the earlier, we was able to, uh, we was, from the earlier questions, we was able to figure out who was the issuer and who was the actual. Um, like and and the the common name. So, we need to get information on the certificate to see who's the actual issuer. From there, we we can just use the same command to get the information, using, and I just know just from jump that. If if the client C A file will be the C A file, or the C A file will be the file of the certificate you need to access. Uh, in order for you to um get that, even though you might not even have to even uh use that command. Um, PK, is there a way, is there a way you could still cat that um file to see or it's encrypted?
I mean, yeah, it's a certi- certi- certificate, so I believe it's.
It's being encrypted, yeah.
It's um, what do you call it, um? They're like base sixty-four.
Yeah, yeah. But either way, if, of course, you can't do K, you can, yeah, we we have to just run that, that open S S L uh command.
It's gonna be a.
Is it dash X five oh nine or just?
X five oh nine, then dash in.
Yeah.
Then the cert.
And then, and then. No, it's no what.
Yeah, text, something, yeah.
No out, there we go.
Yeah, try minus X five oh nine, is it, I don't know, no, I don't think it's.
It may not be minus five X one.
I know parameter text. Should have text in there as far as I know.
Yeah, I think it should.
Anyhow, what was it called, right, documentation?
You should have known, yeah.
I think you got it in another tab there.
That that is for certification signing.
Gotcha, gotcha.
This is.
Just put X five oh nine or something.
Yeah, I was about to, uh, uh, open S S F five oh nine.
Yeah. Maybe an open S S L might be better to put in. Um, there's authenticating, yeah, just put open S S L, yeah. Not sure, yeah, click the first one. And then type in like control F, and then like no out or something.
There you go. So you, yeah, so it was a parameter, you have to put dash X, I mean dash X, you didn't put that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did, yeah.
There we go.
So for this one, she will Kryptonite's.
Uh, it's ten years, it's it's not expired yet.
Yeah.
So, so this shouldn't be the one that we're looking at then?
No. Man, look at the wrong one.
I don't think, is it ten, it's ten years?
Yes, it was ten years.
Okay, yeah, let's look at the um, the other file, just to see if it's.
Wait, oh, service certificate, I'm sorry guys. You might have to look in the service certificate, it looks like.
No, I don't think that's what it is.
Oh, here, um, two, three, seven, nine, so it's authenticating to, it's trying to authenticate to. What is it, E C D, right? Oh, I think that's the certificate we're gonna look at, is the.
Quick question, the two, three, seven, nine, so that's just pretty much, eh, the port period for. E T C D, unless, unless it's um, unless it's different, like unless you specify differently?
Yeah. Look at this cert.
Issuer.
I think we should go back and look at some, um.
Wouldn't the answer be in the file somewhere, like we should be looking for, cause I don't think we had to change this certificate though.
Yeah, I don't think it needs to be changed either, like, let's go back and do some like, like. You know, like another, what do you call it, uh? Cry cuddle, or not cry cuddle, but like the journal C T L, see if anything pops up with that, um, and then like grep. Um, what was it, what is it saying, the API server, so like, put a, put cube, like API or something? Grab minus I cube. See if anything pops up with that.
Is this the container? Crash loop back off.
Oh, restarting.
Wait a minute, have we even attempted to look into the actual pod, I mean, or the Yamal file?
That's what we were just looking at.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, error, syncing pause our container with crash loop back off. Restarting, it restarted. When I hear crash loop back off, I feel like that tells me that something like a, like a config map or. You know, or something like that, just prohibiting these the pod from even starting. But. Is there any like type in, like grep another, grep error? Like, um, like grep again, and then like, oh, yeah, grep, once I like error, E R R. Just see if there's any, if it slims it down or not.
I see something, is that right, do we supposed to be trying to connect to port sixty-four forty-three?
Yes.
Okay, I did want to make sure.
That's one of the, that that's actually one of the ports we have to open when you um manually install that okay A D M. Um, so that, that port is correct, that's the, that's a, the Q maybe API port.
A mirror pod. Namespaces. Saying the same shit, nothing really useful. Okay, so we did logs. Cube it.
Check the logs for E C D. Have we already done that?
Rejecting connection, bad certificate. So it's one of the, it's one of the citizens in E, in the E T C D.
Definitely the, so that certificate is bad, the one we looked at earlier.
I'm looking the wrong thing, kinda why is that?
The C D is rejecting it, even though he has a, he has the certificate.
Can you go to the Yama file for the um E T C D again?
For E C D?
Is, we should be looking at the um N P R thing.
Yeah.
No, no. Oh, man, cause not given, I mean, one of the um.
We can look at.
Instead of tail is bad certificate, the the certificate is bad, um, go to the. Let's go to the certificate, and I guess we have to look at each one.
But you gotta remember, it's rejecting a certificate that the Q A P I is using.
Yeah. But, just give me a second, I might have to look.
Go to the Q A P I, bro. Me, to Q A P I, um.
Oh, yeah, maybe I'm looking, yeah, maybe I'm looking in the wrong one, something with the E T T.
Alright, wait, no, let's, let's go, yeah, okay, cause I wanna look at what what volumes it attaches, right?
Okay, oh, oh. You were right.
I again, I don't know if this is right or not, but I wanna, I'll, it's, it's, it's getting me when it says it then. It was a crash loopback, so it has to be something like, uh, something mounting or something, um. Mount path, E C D S S L search. T L S private, and we can compare what's in the actual P K I folders too. If it's spelled raw properly and.
What I normally do is I'll probably use a, like use another terminal too, so that. Doesn't, if you want to, I don't know, that'd be easier for you, like have another, um, and then have, open another terminal and then. Toggle back and forth to compare.
This is an interesting question, this is a good one.
Wait, 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 this is a remote E T C, is, is this the um, the K P I server or the E T C D server?
This is, this is the API server.
Okay, thanks.
Let's see what's in here. Should be the right file, the P I server, E C D client cert.
Wait a minute, that's it, that's it. That right there is the wrong path, it's in, it, since it's, it's in the E T C D, it needs to be in a, uh, coming from the A T, the E T C D file. So it's not the point of fact that it's the wrong, it is the, that the cert is invalid, that's using the wrong cert for it to begin with.
Oh, the, yeah, the C A file is wrong.
I knew it was, I knew it was something, I just couldn't, I, I had to really.
Kryptonite's, the API server C A file, not E C D C A file.
Yeah, so it's a, it's a, it is correct, it, it is in the wrong place, we just have to have it mapped to the, to the correct place.
Good catch, good catch, man. Oh, if we come down here. What do you just add E C D?
Yeah. But it makes sense why the log didn't say the path is wasn't found, because the path that existed, that's what made it so. Made, made me, made a second guess, I guess. It won't take a while too.
I think it's restarted yet. I actually did, it's already working.
Oh, yep, it is.
That was a tough one right there.
Catch, man.
Appreciate it.
Another thing too is if there's a, if you have another cluster, look at that shit and compare them both.
Ooh, that's a good, that is a good idea. Do you know if the, if they, most of their stuff, eh, eh, like would be multi cus- cluster, but how?
Everyone, is there like twenty clusters on that shit?
Okay.
Oh.
God, I do know, um, go cloud, like when you do like a multi, no, it has like two or three clusters that you can.
It's four, it's usually four on, on here, on, on here.
Is there usually different, um, like API server, is it like the control plan, is there usually more than one?
No, 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 I don't think so. But what I was saying is like, yeah, you can like switch to context to like another cluster or something, whatever, and, um, get. One on that's like working, on another answer or another question or something, and then you can just like do a diff. And it'll show you.
Oh, the diff command.
You know what I'm saying, and you can really see the difference in that, so it kind of easier to catch than you having to like go line by line.
What is the diff command, I don't think I have learned about that.
Yeah, yeah, so there's, there's a d- a command called diff, where you um use two files. And you can compare like two, two files, so it'll tell you what's different on each one, so. Yeah, and to put two Fs to.
I did two F.
Yeah, two, two Fs, and then it'll tell you, those are two separate files, but, um. Yeah, it'll tell you like what's different.
So, how will be, we be able to do that? Um, if it's like in two different. Clusters, I know they, I know we have to connect, but I was just trying to, would they have like the, oh wait.
Nah, look at a, um. Like.
Can we do it on here?
K get, gate, do K get, um, clusters, whatever, yeah, like K, K.
K config, get clusters.
Yeah. I think, yeah.
Plural, there you go. That was only one.
In a test environment, you'll be able to get both, you'll be able to see them both. And then you can, even if you just do like a copy and you redirect it, you can, you can go to the point where you can. You can secure copy it to that other, what's naming, you, if you need to go that deep, you know what I'm saying, like there's possible ways that you can like really see. Cause that'll be a working E C D config, so, when it's working, they're not gonna go in there and do like a lot of changes on that, cause that's like the default, the default. But that's just like a, another, a whole nother way that you can like kind of take advantage of. You know, some, some uh troubleshooting.
Yeah, I didn't think of that, of using, yeah, that's actually, yeah, ingenious.
That's dope, yeah, I did not know about the diff comment, so that's good to know, I will be abusing that one.
Yeah, and. Unique as well as another way to do it, so, but diff is gonna get you, uh, you can use diff for like even uh GitHub, like you have like some commits. You can compare different commits, um, with the diff as well, so pretty, and other like, on programs too. Yeah, I love that diff commitment, it's, it's good.
Alright, with that one, um, we can go ahead and uh, complete the. Alright, with that one, um, we can go ahead and uh complete the certification uh se- session here lab. Um.
That's good.
Next up is gonna be the certificate.
Do you wanna, do you wanna like, uh, like quickly look at the solution, I just wanna see how they solved it at the end, like I'm just curious on how they did it.
Yeah, I think that, I think I skipped that part and I stopped doing that. So I will, I really wanna see how, oh.
Run P S.
They did a grab.
See, hold on, hold on.
But they did Docker? Oh, run Docker, run, run Cryco, oh, instead of Docker. But what did they?
So we got the same, we got the same. We end up the same way, like that's the same, um. It's, I can't even think. That's the same um era that we, that we came across right there.
Did see it, yeah.
That was the same exact error, I really, I, yeah, I would like to see how they figured out. Quickly which one is, or did I just like we did, just look line by line.
And are they, are they, oh, yeah, there, there, he's talking, um. Like fast forward it a little bit, let's just see like if there's any like. And let's see what he did, okay, Docker, okay, but it's the same, you see, you said use Crycutter, that's literally the same commands.
Yeah.
Docker logs.
Okay.
At C D.
Rejecting connection.
We saw that too.
Yep.
So we came to the conclusion that it's something that's wrong with the. Certificate, but wait. Bad certificate.
Okay. Okay, it's C D, Kubernetes manifest, Q A P I.
Okay, pretty much doing the same thing we did. Oh, so he pretty much just found it quicker than I did, alright. This. Oh.
Mm hmm.
But that's how he confirmed it. Well, no, that, no, no, that's not ain't confirmed, he just thinking it out.
Yeah, it's a D C, oh.
Yeah, he just thinking it out, then he compared it.
That's good, that's good.
Yeah, so he pretty much saying that um, he just knows that the Kubernetes has its own C A file and H C D has its own C A file.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, that premise doesn't have the knowledge of it. Um, let me get. So, okay.
C, C A file.
And you just wanna replace it, okay, that makes sense.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, cool, good start. I was just curious to see how they, how they about it.
Yeah, um, but it, it looks like the Cry C T L logs is the key here. To finding out which component is having an issue.
Alright, and you see, they are, they, he only did it on like the one that's alive.
Mm hmm.
So if there's any way that you need to like look at old logs, even on like something that was gone. Um, definitely the var log pods is a, is a, is a, is another back doorway that you can get that information.
So, uh, I'm sorry, I think.
What, what was your question?
Vincent, did you say something? We lost him.
Yeah, I think so.
Well, he'll ask it when he, I see him logging back in, so.
Yeah, my bad, I had to then take my mouth out, out of the power and, yeah, sorry about that.
Uh, does anybody have any question on the certificates?
Uh, no, that was cool.
Alright, we can uh jump over to the practice test for the certificate A P I. And in Kubernetes, we use this guy to pretty much send in request. To. Get signed certificates and uh admin can go ahead and approve or deny those uh requests. And this uh, this lab will show us exactly how that works. Alright. You member Akshay has joined your team, they require access to the cluster and you know certificate, they need to put in a certificate signing request. Or there is already one that root for them. But let's take a look at that actually. Your request. Okay. And, yeah, so the way that um. The A P I works is we create a Kubernetes object with the certificate request. Which then the admin would see and then they can use our cube C T L commands to approve, deny it or delete it. So, in this case, we're gonna be creating that object. Um. The way I found, I, I did not find a. Imperative way of creating this object, um, if anybody knows one. Let me know.
Yeah, I'm not even good with this stuff, to be honest, like.
I'm trying to remember how I, how I did it, or I might have just had, I might just re- refer, refer to the dot. In all honesty, I think it's what I did for this one.
Yeah, that's what I planned to do during the test, um. The way I do it is, we're just, we're gonna get to this exact page, uh, use the certificate signing request as the search that I use.
Mm hmm.
And. The first guy here, and it's all the way at the bottom. If you sign your request, and I just grab just this part right here.
Yeah.
That's pretty much all you're gonna need, um, well, you also need the actual certificate request, but it does have to be in base sixty-four format. So you'll have to go ahead and decode this, so.
So does it have to be decoded, cuz I always get mixed up with this part, does it need to be decoded?
Encoded.
I think it, it has to be encoded when you, we actually put it inside of the um, the manifest file.
Yep, that is correct, B sixty-four.
Okay.
Yeah.
Encoded version.
Now, that's a way to where, cuz I think this here, it has the spacing and, and when you actually paste it. But in uh, it actually goes like this, but if you, there's a command in the dock that allows it to where it has no spacing whatsoever. It makes it easier for you, yeah, that's the one right there.
Yeah.
Yeah, so uh, put the, the pipe into the T R, that's D, and then uh, and comma, um, backslash in, and it make it to where there's no spacing at all. Uh, so you don't have to do it.
You guys know what that command is, that T R?
No.
Is D? So T R is, it, it stands for translate.
Ah.
Translate is like, you, in, in the minus D is you're deleting the new line, so it's no longer gonna have any new lines. So that's what that T R means, so it's deleting any new line character.
Oh.
Okay, why is it, why is it, why my thing got in Japanese, oh, sorry.
Tell me what?
Yeah, my, somehow my brother got to Japanese, I don't know how, I'm trying to get that fixed.
Uh. Okay. Alright, so, let's go ahead and do vim, we can name this whatever, but I'll name it.
Name it one, so you can get used to that. One dot YAM, or no, it's number two, or number two, sorry. I always like to put the number on a question, because if you need to go back, you can always just go reference the number.
Oh, I see.
That's oh, that's actually very, very smart.
Yeah.
And let's go ahead and copy this guy.
Oh, there we go, that's found it.
This.
Hey, that's why the dogs are so good, man. Um. Yeah, you might just, yeah, do requests, yeah. I think, is it, is it a S or, um, no, I think it's just singular.
Yeah, it's just singular. And.
Oh, perfect.
And we wanna change my user to Akshay. That looks good to me. And then we just create it like any other object. Okay, create dash F. To the YAM. There we go.
Nice, nice, it wasn't too bad, actually, when we walked through it.
Yeah, it's pretty, this is neat because I was going one, line by line and deleting the new space.
Yeah, I did that, I did it first time too, then I like, you know what, let me just look in the doctor's, he couldn't. And I have noticed that they will, they will give you the commands that, that make it easier for the manifest file. Um, from previous questions, I just went and look, you know, like, oh, they actually do have uh easier command, so.
The good part is all, it's all on this page.
Yeah, it's right, careful, you don't even gotta go far to find it, which is great. Then now you can get C S R, it literally tells you the next steps you gotta do too.
Honestly, I wish I, like, I had to search for this. To figure that out. And I did not realize that it was right there, but yeah, um. The right C S R is used, so we, let's just double check that, K gets C S R. And Akshay's created and pending, so let's go ahead and. From that. Very good. Uh, what is the condition of the newly created certificate request? What's the condition, guys?
Um, did you already put it, you're pending.
Pending, yeah.
There you go. And approve the C S R request, so that's also in documentation right here.
Mm hmm.
So let's do K certificate. Prove. And actually. Actually has been approved, I was playing around with this, um. Well, at least what they did not, having I actually tried this with the approvals, but. So now it's approved, I was curious, can you go back and deny it?
You can. You definitely can.
Can you? You cannot.
Oh, crap. So you have to delete it? And, and then deny it?
That's why I'm assuming you have to be resubmitted.
Yeah.
Unless there's more comments, let's um, let's do this real quick, K certificate, dash, dash, help. Yeah, approve deny, it's the only option. Yeah, so it has to be resubmitted.
I know you could delete the service, but yeah, I guess you have to delete the service and then. Then, then that's when you're only, you can deny, okay, that's good, that's real, real good to know.
The, the reason it came up, I was curious if it was denied, cuz they tell you to delete it after. Why would you, can it be reapproved later on, but I did not see a way that it, that can happen. So I, I think you would wanna keep it for logs.
Yeah.
Alright, uh, how many C S R requests are available on this cluster, as we can see here, there's two. The routine check, you realize that there is a new C S R, there is new C S R request in place, what is the name of this request, so, let's go. K gets C S R.
Agent Smith.
Yep.
Let's see if they did there.
And you're not aware of this request. Let's find out the group, so. I did not know how you could describe the C S R, or probably just K describe.
Yeah, I, I, I pretty much K described the, the, um, the service request. So, um, yeah, K describe.
Sorry.
Sir, yeah.
Just Smith, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
I did not know.
Yeah, that worked, and then um, that's when you can find it.
Wait, I did it was K gets C S R. Agent Smith.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I see that um, that the C S R one also works too.
Yeah, you gotta remember too, sometimes you don't have, and this is just another thing that's wait, and we'll go over it when I go over the security stuff.
Mm hmm.
Um. You can get, say you get like a secret. You may not be able to have access to like describe that secret, but if you can have the access to get the secret, you can get it, if that makes sense.
Yep.
Yeah.
So it is more powerful than describe, you know.
Got you.
Then you just output it into a YAM.
They just put C S R. What is the R of it, and then sample again?
Certificates, uh, what, signing requests?
Okay, cuz I'll probably would have just put the K, uh, get. Spelled out certificate and push tab, I didn't know that was the abbreviation for it, so I'll keep that in mind.
As you can see here, what is the group that we have?
So the group that trying to get is the masters and the authenticated.
Authenticated is not mentioned here, but masters is. Go with that. Doesn't look right, reject this request. So let's go ahead. I don't know why that doesn't autocomplete.
Yeah, certain things don't, like setting images or um rollout. Q T R doesn't allow you to like autocomplete too, some, some things don't let you do it.
And now delete the.
This is what I was, I was just curious, like, hey, can I just approve? No, you cannot.
So once it, once it's denied approve, it, it's a wrap.
Damn, so if you approve it, you would have to do this whole like glab over, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can just grab the whole name here.
Yeah.
There she goes. Yeah, that is the whole signing uh C S R A P I. Pretty simple. Any questions on this one?
Mm hmm.
Alright, cube config. So your cube config is gonna be the file that your cube C T L uses to authenticate with the cube A P I server. You would configure this prior to using your Kubernetes. Um, so whenever you do your cube A D M, you know, you gotta set your. Your cube config files, or you won't be, your, your connection will get refused pretty much.
Right.
So. The default file location is. There's a few, but uh, the main one that everybody knows is gonna be in your root dot cube config. Or cube slash config. Go here.
Yeah.
Could take a look at it too, unless that cube.
Are we in the root?
Yeah. So here's our, the config file, and we can actually. Get it, just so we s- see what's inside. And. We're gonna go through here and uh, uh, through these questions and um. We'll get more understanding, but I, it's, it's always structured in the cluster context and then the users. And the cut, so the cluster is gonna be the cluster that you have access to. And the user is gonna be your user kind of share context too, and the context is gonna, is gonna connect it to. And tell us which user has access to which cluster. So let's go ahead and answer these questions, um, how many clusters defined in the default cube config file, so this, that's what we're looking at right now.
Oh, that's another way to look at it too. Oh, that's another way to look at it too. No header, I think, is, no, is it, wait. Ah, what's that command? You can count them. How many? There's a, there's a command that you can have, they just showed a number. I just can't think of it right now.
Number of what?
How many clusters that you have?
Clusters?
Instead of count them. Like, are you, of course, you could put two. Well, hold on, you only use to put one.
Well, I mean, are you, if you have to like, use a cube config, I mean, you can do cube.
Yeah.
You can do Q cuddle, config, get clusters, pipe that to word count minus L.
There it is.
Have to do dash, you have to do dash dash, um, no headers.
There we go. That's why, that's, that's the com, that was the command I can, I can.
You can do it on that command. I don't know if you can.
I know it's no, you have to put no header, um.
No headers.
No headers.
That name is gonna be.
Yeah, so you, it's like, so.
Either minus one, either minus one, or you can just do the no headers. But no headers is gonna be on the get cluster side.
Yeah, it, it'll be before the pipe.
Yeah.
Maybe dash, dash, no headers.
Yeah. If it works, I don't know. I never tried it with that. Yeah, no headers doesn't work for that one. So you could just do get clusters, then pipe it. Um wait, WC is word count. L is for line.
That's what it is. Actually, PJ, that's, that's exactly what the one for this one that I learned. I just couldn't remember it. There you go.
So you gotta minus the one though, so yeah, but you'll be able to get it. I don't think you can do math arithmetic on it, so.
I think it's L, actually. That's either L or, or, or um.
Yeah, that's an L, yeah.
Okay.
That's an L. That, the minus L is for um, for line, number of lines. But yeah, that's it. That's just the other way that you can do this, so yeah, that's one.
Two?
So we're gonna have one here.
I thought it was two. Okay.
Uh, so as you see here, cluster, there's only one certificate.
Yeah.
And that one name. That's, this uh, threw me off for the users.
How many users are def, in the fine default cube config file? It's one, right?
Uh, yeah, it is one. Um, I thought it was a two at first, because of the fact that there's a two keys.
You know, you got the, you got the key and a certificate, you know, they both.
Yeah, but still only one. You could just really just go off of just the um, the username.
Yeah, the name, because that's like, if you see word under users, it's that dash, means that that's a list, so that's the only one in that, like, in that list.
Okay.
Yeah, but yeah, it, it could get you caught up though.
Then I'm assuming if there was another one, we'd get, we have another dash.
I mean, contact. So you can pretty much do the same, but instead of get, get cluster, you could get, get contact.
Yeah, and it's one, like, yeah, I think it's one.
Yeah, but it's, but it's only one contact you look at that, yeah. Alright, what user is configured? In the current context, it'll be Kubernetes admin.
Yeah. Because people see it says current contact, can they assume that it's the Kubernetes admin at Kubernetes? But it's just that Kubernetes admin, which is that name, the Kubernetes is the actual cluster.
Yeah.
Yeah. What is the name of the cluster configured? Well, we just confirmed that it's gonna be Kubernetes.
Again, you could.
Alright, but that's a new manifest file.
Let's get. Alright, so here's a new file.
How many clusters does it have?
Many clusters?
Uh, one, two, three, four. Yeah, four.
Alright.
Any contacts? One, two, three, four as well.
Yep. Scroll down for you, for the users. Well, it's not asking us.
Users configured in the research context.
Okay, what are you, well, you could just look on here. Um, it'll be dev user.
User, right? Correct.
Dev user, yeah. Sorry.
Uh, what's the name of the client certificate for the A W S user? Uh, where's it at? Alright, it'll be A W S dash user, T uh, dot T R T. Hey, what is the current? Context. Oh, the current context.
It's at the bottom.
Oh, there we go, yeah. Highlighted, it's like test user.
Is it access? Test cluster, set the current context to the right one. Is it Q C U use context? And it's dev user test? Oh, so set context to research. So you want to use the context name, the research, because if you look at a context, the cluster and the user match.
Yep. Can config use context? And research, you said?
Yeah, I believe research, yeah, that should.
Anything else that we need to add here?
Uh, what we doing? Hold on, I would like to use the, um, as dev user. Is that, is that, is that, do I do it?
Uh, that's just testing access.
Oh.
Yeah.
No context exists with this name.
Context names, research, right?
But it's the right context. You're on the right path.
Cluster one, user. On the right context, use the configure use context command. I don't wanna do that.
Maybe just forgot this one, PJ, that uh, because we're not in the default, we're not using the default, um.
Oh, put dash dash, you gotta specify the cube config file too, so dash dash conf, like, um nah, try Q, like, go, go um, exit off of this.
No, you do, I think.
Like, exit, or like, you, um, you can put uh, control A and then, yeah, okay. Now, enter um, K. And then dash dash help, like, and then it's gonna say like, because we can specify the cube config file that we wanna use, right? So um, scroll up a little bit. Do like a K get or something like that. Um, we might be able, actually go up to the one, the command that we were using before. And let's see if it just lets us do like the dash dash at the end of it.
What do you mean?
Oh, I think we made.
Yeah, like the same command that we're using before, go up. Use context. And then specify the, I think it was research. And then space dash dash help.
Can we just use the, can we just do the use context, that that's help? Does it, that, that help?
Yeah, I tried absolutely, but it would, it already would, it gave us the usage right here.
Oh, it did? Oh, I didn't, okay.
But it's, it's, I think like dash dash config is like capital or something like that, but or config file, I don't remember exactly.
Context named an option. I think, I think we've been missing a, it looks like we're missing an option here and then, like.
Let me see. Let me go on the okay.
There's there's cube.
Okay, it's dash dash Q, um, cube config.
Ah.
Wait, is it? Yeah, I think.
Yeah.
I don't know why it didn't show us that, though. It should have showed us. It's lowercase.
I think because um.
You gotta specify that location of that, um.
Let me check something real quick.
I don't remember where it was. There it is, my cube config. See, that might work. Yeah. So it didn't exist in the current default config.
Yep. So you have to specify the config map, or the cube config that you wanna use. Uh, where I found it, I found this under cube config files, cluster access using cube config file. It's, you scrolled down just a little bit, it's right here.
Yeah, I, I already just looked that one up.
Specify the file, okay.
Yeah, but you also can set the cube config, like, the um, the environment variable.
Yep.
Um, to that as well. So that also is another way.
Let's, let's try that real quick, um.
I actually echo it, like, if you echo it, just to see what it's currently showing up as, and let's see, like, what, how is it actually, like, set up? Well, no, I'm sorry, um, E N V it. My bad, bro. Well, same thing, right? Uh.
It could be specified in here, right?
Yeah, it can be, yeah.
And which one are you looking for? What we're looking for? Uh, what's um, environment path?
The only time you would uh, set that variable, I think, is if you had it in a different directory.
Right, right. And by default, it's searching in the dot cube config.
Yep.
But yeah, cool.
Uh, yeah. Up to the next guy. Make that file the default cube config.
Okay.
So yeah, there's two ways we can do that.
How I did was, I cat the file, redirect it to the config file. To the cube.
That's the easiest way.
Yeah.
Feels funny, because I did a harder way the first time. At least I tried to and it didn't work. I'm like, wait, I could just do this.
Should work.
Yeah.
Yeah, the other way is you, you set that environment variable.
Oh.
With the current context set to research, we're trying to access the clusters, however.
Can you get pods dash A? Well, this is gonna tell us what's going, the issue. Oh yeah, so they actually tell you to run their get pods. So command, we get um cannot open it because it's the wrong cert, or the file does not exist. So let's check on the uh, file.
Yeah. We know it doesn't exist, so we probably should just look at the dev user.
Yeah, that it, yeah, that's the only thing we have to look into though.
And see what it's like, what is listed in there.
So it looks like we didn't need to remove, what we need to put dev user, not develop you, developer user.
Yep.
Yeah. Oh yeah, under user. Dev user, okay.
Alright, that looks good.
Yep, it is.
So let's try to K get pods again. Looks like we are, we're in business. Alright. That's it.
Nice.
That one was an easy one.
Yeah.
Just to recap it real quick, the cube config is gonna be your authentication file that you use to connect to the A P I server, and if you, as you can see, if you're misconfigure it, then you won't be able to do any Q C T L commands. Um, yeah. Any questions on that?
That was great.
There, we conclude today's session. Alright, it's nine fifty-six. Um, as always, if you're watching on the replay, and if you find this information valuable, please leave a like and subscribe. If you're looking to join our study group, just uh, shoot me a message. Um, on LinkedIn or on YouTube. Um, and thank you for watching. I'll see you on the next one.